The AP will call to order a regular meeting, special meeting of the Mayor and his trustees. The Board of Trustees request confirmation of who is calling in.
Trustee Gavin.
Here.
Trustee Banks.
Present.
Trustee Beavers.
Present.
Trustee Cunningham.
Present.
Mayor Murphy.
Present.
Long is established.
Please stand for a moment of silence and remain standing to give our march of allegiance without deceiving by trustee Beavers.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. By way of proceeding, let me acknowledge that we know there's obviously residents and guests with us this evening that are interested in these proposals and you certainly have an opportunity to ask questions and make comments. We also wanted to acknowledge that the Board and I have received correspondence over the last few days and whether that was given to all or just the Mayor's office, we had made sure that those copies were provided to each member of the Board. And I would also note that the Board members have been given copies of the 125-plus pages of the Plan Commission meeting so that they were able to review that and in that process review the questions and comments that were made on occasion of the Plan Commission meeting. Let me go briefly over with you the process for our consideration of these matters this evening. As you probably have a copy of the agenda, there are two items related to this development. The first is ordinance 201147 and the second is another resolution regarding a economic incentive agreement. We will consider both of these matters separately and we will begin with entertaining a motion to approve and second each of these matters because Robert's Rules of Order requires that the motion be on the floor for deliberation, so that will occur from the very beginning. Following that motion, the staff will give the Board and the residents an overview of what's being proposed and that will be followed with an opportunity for the developer to make any comments they choose. And after that, under each of these resident, each of these agenda items, residents will have the opportunity to ask questions and make comments. Following that resident opportunity to make questions and comments, the Board of Trustees themselves will have an opportunity to raise questions and then should they choose to do so, after all of their questions have been asked, they will be given an opportunity to those to choose to do so and make any comments and only after that will there be a vote taken. Let me also ask all that are here tonight, including Board members and staff and residents, that when you are addressing the group, we would ask that you speak directly into the microphone so that everyone can hear what you're having to say. And likewise, because this is a public meeting, if you choose to address the Board, it would be necessary for you to simply state your name and address for purposes of your record. So we're now going to proceed with the active agenda and prior to considering a motion, well actually I will proceed with asking for a motion to approve ordinance 201147 granting approval of amendment to the Village of Woodridge Comprehensive Plan, approval of amendment to a special use permit previously granted so as to approve an amendment to the previously approved conceptual plan for McAdams Regional Plan Unit Development, approval of the RPUD zoning lot plan for parcel C of McAdams, approval of preliminary and final plan for Platte Regional Plan Unit Development for Lot 1 and Lot A and B of Union Point Business Park Phase 1 and parcel C of McAdams and approval of preliminary and final plan of subdivision for parcel C of McAdams Union Point Venture Number 1 LLC, northwest corner of I-55 and I-255. And I would inquire as to whether there is a motion and a second. Motion by trustee Beavers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Cunningham. Okay, the motion is on the floor, we will now proceed with the process and for the purpose of proceeding, I would call an administrative rush.
Thank you. I'll be quickly turning this over to Michael Mays, the Director of Community Development. The applicants' Union Point Venture Number 1 LLC and Orchard Hill Building Company are requesting zoning approvals to accommodate construction of a 362,500 square foot office warehouse facility for Edward Don and Company and associated improvements Phase 1 and future construction of an 80-acre business park. To do so requires amendments to the Woodridge Comprehensive Plan and the McAdams Regional Plan Unit Development Plan to permit office warehouse uses in addition to office uses. Michael.
Good evening. What I'd like to do this evening is walk you through a couple of different points. First, starting with a project overview and then providing a summary of resident concerns. This is accumulation of the concerns that were heard at the Plan Commission meeting on October 3rd as well as concerns raised through subsequent letters to the Mayor and the Village Board. I'm going to turn it over to Dan Folgerty with McShane to do a brief overview of the project and then to entertain questions. What I'd like to do first is go through a series of maps to help everybody familiarize yourself with what's involved with what the Village Board is going to be considering tonight. This first map shows the northeast corner of 355 and 55. Farmingdale Village Units 23, 24, and 25 subdivisions are here. And though it's hard to see on this map, this red line is the property that is being considered for zoning approvals this evening. Now, we've also included on this map this blue line, which is approximately 20 acres that is within the Village of Bowling Brook. So in total, there is approximately 100 acres, 80 acres within Woodridge and 20 acres in Bowling Brook. And as I proceed with the presentation, I will describe in greater detail the purpose for showing the Bowling Brook jurisdiction. To familiarize yourself with some of the terms that we'll be using tonight as they relate to zoning consideration, there are three separate areas within the Village of Woodridge. They are referred to as the McAdams Parcel D, the McAdams Parcel C, and the Wolf Property. McAdams Parcels D and C are approximately 61 acres in size and the Wolf Property is approximately 19 acres in size. For Village Board consideration tonight is several items, including a request to amend the Conference of Plan, a request to amend the McAdams RPUD, what we call the Regional Plan Unit Development Conceptual Plan, as well as a request for approval of an RPUD, again Regional Plan Unit Development Zoning Lot Plan, Preliminary RPUD Plan, and Final RPUD Plan for the Edward Don Facility, which is approximately 20 acres, which is also being referred to tonight as Phase 1. In the Conference of Plan, the Conference of Plan is a guiding document that the Village adopted in 2007 that helps to direct future growth within the community. In this document, it designated for this area, and again, these parcels here that I've been referring to, it designated them for office uses. Because the proposal tonight is asking for office warehouse, it requires an amendment to the Conference of Plan. The current zoning of the property, and let me again familiarize yourself with this map because it's kind of hard to see because it's a zoning map, just for bearings, this is 55, this is 355, here is Woodward, the south here is International Center. And the property in question is zoned, two different classifications. The first is ORI, Office Research and Light Industrial. It has been zoned ORI since its annexation in 1989. The 19 acres, which I referred to before as the Wolf Property, is zoned R1. That is single-family residential. The purpose of that zoning, when the property was annexed into the Village in 2002, it was involuntarily annexed. And when property is involuntarily annexed into the Village, it's automatically zoned the most restrictive zoning classification within the community. So even though the Conference of Plan had designated that for office and it's been intended for commercial development, it's awaiting rezoning consideration and that's why it remains a single-family at this point. This is the McAdams Regional Plan Unit Development Plan in 1989, when this approximately 440 acres were annexed into the Village of Woodridge. Along with that was approved this Regional Plan Unit Development Plan. This plan, this concept plan showed designated uses for each of the parcels here. And again, what we're talking about in particular for tonight's consideration is parcel C and D. Originally, when the RPUD was approved by the Village Board in 1989, the two uses that were designated for parcel C and D were multifamily residential and what was called office research. When the annexation agreement associated with the regional plan unit development, the RPUD, expired in 2009, the rights to multifamily went away and what remains as a designated use tonight is the office research use. And just to kind of explain the distinction between zoning and these use designations, with the RPUD, the RPUD guides overall uses within this entire concept plan, excuse me, conceptual plan. The zoning is an overlay district, which is provided to dictate bulk regulations and uses in many cases, but this plan guides the uses that can be allowed with each of the parcels within the development. As I mentioned before, there are several approvals for consideration tonight that are related to Phase 1. Phase 1 is the proposed Edward Don Facility, approximately a 360,000 square foot office warehouse facility that includes 55,000 square feet of office. Edward Don is proposing to relocate their corporate headquarters and distribution facilities from North Riverside to this location. And it requires the three approvals I mentioned before, the zoning lot plan, the preliminary RPUD plan, and the final RPUD plan in order to move forward. When the developer came to the Village with this proposal, staff required that the developer also consider the impacts of the 20 acres that I mentioned before that are in Bowling Brook. And I apologize, this is oriented differently than the other maps, but to accommodate the size and so you could see the proposal better, it is turned over, so let me reorient you to where it's at. This is 355, north is up here, 55 is down here, and we have Woodward along here. And what McShane did is they put together this conceptual plan, which is a mix of both office warehouse and office uses. Again, it's very conceptual, it's not tied to the zoning, but it enabled the Village to evaluate the potential impact of this project, not only within the Village of Woodridge, but also outside the Village's jurisdiction within Bowling Brook, which would rely on Woodard Roads for access. What I'd like to do tonight is briefly highlight the concerns we've heard from residences regarding this project. The four areas of concern that I'd like to cover are traffic, the traffic concerns, the impact of traffic with both trucks and cars, light and sound pollution, construction activity, and the incompatible use that's being proposed for this area. So first, traffic, trucks and cars. In the 2007 Conference of Plan, there's a section that addresses transportation issues. And what it points out is that Woodward Avenue is one of three principal arterial north-south roadways within the Village. Through the Conference of Plan, it had contemplated that this would be a major arterial road which would allow traffic to move through the community north and south. The other two roads are Route 53 and Lamont Road. The road was also designed to accommodate trucks and more significant traffic load than what is currently being utilized today. And if you have specific questions about that, we also have consultants for the Village, Benes and Associates, that can provide greater detail regarding that. Despite the fact that the road can accommodate the additional traffic, both the Conference of Plan and the intent with this development is to route semi-trucks away from Woodward Avenue. And what I've done is I've put up an illustration that shows the proposed business park. This is Woodward Avenue, 355 and 55. The intent is that all semi-truck traffic would utilize an internal collector road within the development, exit at the southernmost point adjacent to 55 and Woodward, and then continue south on Woodward and utilize International Parkway to Lamont out to 55 for access to the expressways. As I mentioned, the intent with the conceptual plan and the Phase 1 with this proposal is that there would be an internal road, which would serve the entire park that is also inclusive of the 20 acres within Bowling Brook. Semi-truck traffics again would be required to exit south and utilize Woodward South over the I-55 Bridge and not be able to go north onto Woodward up to Bowton. With this proposal this evening, as a mixed-use office warehouse and office development, as opposed to what is allowed within the Conference of Plan, as well as the conceptual plan with the RPUD, based on traffic studies, this mixed-use proposal would reduce overall daily trips. These are the number of vehicles coming and going from the park on a daily basis, 54% or 43,000 daily trips versus if it was exclusively office development. Light and sound pollution. The development, both Phase 1 and subsequent developments, will have to adhere to the Village's regulations as it relates to lighting. One of those regulations is with respect to candle power. And let me just describe candle power for everybody. How we measure light is through one candle, that is one candle power. With this proposal at Woodward Avenue, based on the photometric plans for Edward Don, there will be zero candle power at the Parkway. So this isn't even across the street with the residential, it's on their side of the street, it's going to be zero. The primary reason for this is the developer intentionally put all the lighting on the west side of the building where all the docks and truck activity are going to be away from the east side that faces the residential. In the Village's code, it requires .1 candle maximum lighting when you're adjacent to residential, so this is below that. It also will meet the Village's more restrictive lighting standards. You will recall that earlier this year, the Village Board approved an amendment to the zoning ordinance that included more restrictive standards to lighting, including a difference in the types of lights that are used, which reduce glare and also requiring shielding. The buildings are oriented on the conceptual plan specifically to help serve as a buffer between the residential homes to the east and the tollway and the activity of the business park to the west. In addition, one of the most important considerations with this issue and a natural concern of this type of development located adjacent to residential is what is going to be the overall impacts to that neighborhood. And here, the Village can rely on past success and history with respect to existing business parks that are adjacent to residential. You may recall that they include 81, 02 Lamont Road, it's 100,000 square foot of building directly adjacent to residential on Lamont Road, includes the Bridge Point Business Park, which is located at the northwest corner of Lamont and Davie Road, the Maple Point Business Park further north on Lamont Road, Woodhill Crossings, that's the 80-acre business park off of Davie and Joliet Road, and of course, Prologis International Center. All of these business parks have similar uses to what is being proposed tonight and with the Village's experience, in part because of the higher standards with landscaping, the design of those parks, and the parks being sensitive to the adjacent residential, they've been good neighbors and successful to the community. Truck proximity to homes. One of the principal concerns of the residents is the trucks, the number of trucks that will be generated from this park and the noise that they will generate. To help address those concerns, staff has put together some analysis, particularly what we wanted to do is look at the collector road that will enter Woodward, and this is approximately 250 feet south of Heritage Parkway. So again, to help orient you, residential to the east, we have the tollway to the west, this is 355, and right here is I-55. What we wanted to do is we wanted to look at what would be the sound generated from semi-trucks leaving this point of access. And let me again point out that with the conditions that are related to this project, all semi-trucks will be required to enter and exit at this southernmost point and leave directly south over the bridge and into International Center. So looking at this point and the sound that these types of trucks would generate, this is approximately 500 feet from the nearest home, which is located at the corner of Heritage Parkway and Woodward Avenue. What this chart shows is tracking decibel levels. This is the measure of sound of whatever, whatever sound, how we measure sound and what's generating that sound. Using IDOT standards, we looked at what a semi-truck would generate for sound going 40 miles an hour. And that's being conservative because again, if you've got, if you've got trucks that are turning at this point, they're not going to be going 40, but we use that as the standard to measure for this example. There are two lines, and I apologize if they're hard to see. There is a yellow line, which we were referring to as hard surface, which I will explain in a second, and a red line, which is referred to as soft surface. Based on design standards and the typical measurement of sound, what we were told is that as sound travels, the sound decreases. The rate of decrease depends on whether the sound is traveling over a hard surface, like roads, or traveling over a soft surface, like grass or vegetation. So what I've done is I've provided the two different lines to show you both as a comparison because if you look back at the red line that I've shown here, it's a combination of both hard surface and soft surface. So at 50 feet, a semi-truck going 45, I'm sorry, 40 miles an hour generates 85 decibels in sound. At 100 feet, you'll see that both lines begin to reduce, but the soft surface sound is being reduced more quickly than the hard surface because it's partially absorbed by the ground. Out to 800 feet, where a truck at 800 feet would be generating approximately 72 decibels and if it's a hard surface, but if it's traveling over a soft surface, 66 decibels. So what does that mean, 72 and 66? Well, as a comparison, a lawnmower generates 96 decibels. A motorcycle at 25 feet, which currently motorcycles are going up and down Woodward Avenue and would be adjacent to the residential, generate 90 decibels. The semi-truck again at 40 miles an hour, 84 decibels. Living room music, 76, a TV at 70, and normal speech at 3 feet is 67. So based on the example that I've shown, what we'd be looking at at 500 feet is around this area, again between normal speech and living room music at a distance of 800 feet. Construction activity. I know that there have been several concerns with the construction activity, the dust, the debris on the roads. Staff has contacted McShane and reminded them of the requirements and they have committed to the Village that they will address these issues. And I just want to briefly go over that in the Village Code, construction activity cannot occur any earlier than 7:00 AM and must conclude at 9:00 AM during the week, Monday through Saturday. On Sundays, it cannot start till 9:00 and must conclude at 7:00. There cannot be any dirt on any public right-of-ways and they must control dust. And what McShane has told the Village is that they're going to have tanker trucks with water out on the site to keep the dust down and a sweeper out there to make sure that the streets will be clean, again, if the Village approves this proposal and they're allowed to move forward with the project. allowed to move forward with the project. Incompatible use for the area. What I'd like to do is first start with the definition of business park because this is what the petitioner is proposing, that the Conference of Plan's use designation for the 80 acres be changed to, from office-only to business park. Definition reads, "Areas that accommodate office, research, and development, warehousing, distribution, light assembly, manufacturing, in a large-scale campus-like setting." To give you a comparison of another area within the community that has a similar designation, that would be International Center. Again, it's a mix of both office and office warehouse uses. Conference Plan has several goals that relate to this project. They include providing adequate transitions between single-family and more intense uses. They include encouraging a strong office, office, research, and industrial base in the community that is compatible with adjacent residential uses. It also addresses truck traffic on Woodward and limiting truck traffic on Woodward. The proposed business park, again, in trying to address those Conference of Plan goals, has oriented all the buildings, both with Phase One with Edward Don and in the conceptual plan, to shield truck activity so that all truck activity would be internal, none of it would face the adjacent residential, or otherwise it would face 355. The park itself serves as a transition between the single-family residential to the east and the tollway to the west. We've already talked about the Woodward Avenue traffic reduction, that if this land use designation is changed, it would reduce the number of daily trips that would come out of this business park by over 4,000. And the proposal is, the concept plan is proposing landscaping in burms to aid in that transition and providing a buffer with the residential to the west. As an example, in the ORI zoning, the building setback would only be 30 feet, but in the case of Edward Don, in part in consideration of the residences to the west, is proposing In summary, while not consistent with the Conference of Plan for the reasons that I've just highlighted, the developer has proposed a development that will be a good transition between the 355 tollway and the residential neighborhoods to the east. As I mentioned before, this proposal would be consistent with several other successful office warehouse and/or business parks within the community that have been adjacent to residential. And in addition, this park would help fulfill one of the village's objectives. Last year, at the 2010 town meeting, residents said one of the primary goals was to attract businesses that would bring corporate headquarters and bring revenue to the community to help diversify the tax base. Woodridge is largely a built-out community with limited available land left to accommodate this goal. In fact, there's only approximately 30 acres remaining designated for office warehouse. So to accomplish this goal, we'd be looking to areas like this proposed business park to bring the corporate headquarters and businesses to the community. And that concludes my presentation, and if there's no immediate questions, I will turn over to Dan Fogarty.
Proceed. Thank you. As Mr. May said, I'm Dan Fogarty with McShane Development Company. Thank you for hearing our proposal tonight. I'm going to limit my comments to just kind of briefly going over some of the design elements that we worked very closely with the staff to incorporate into this proposed development so that we took, we showed the utmost concern to the residential and wanted to minimize impact as we developed the property. So what I'd like to do is focus on the first phase of the development, of the proposed development, which is the Edward Don facility that we've been discussing tonight. What I'm showing you here is a building rendering, and I'd like to focus on this eastern elevation. This is the elevation that would face Woodward Avenue. And I think actually, what I'd like to do is go back to the site plan. I think this probably is the best way to show it. I don't have Mr. May's laser, but the sub... Okay, thank you, great. Just to reorient everyone, this is Woodward Avenue here, and this is the proposed Edward Don facility on roughly 20 acres. The features that we want to make sure that everybody is aware of is the minimum setback from right-of-way for a development of this nature is 30 feet. Our proposed setback from Woodward is 135 feet right here, so roughly four times or more than four times the typical setback. And on this eastern elevation, we have a very robust landscaping package that is well in excess of the village minimums. We've got a retention area here and tree line that is staggered both at the building right at the elevation and also along Woodward to create a nicely buffered and blocked view of the building so that you'd be, residents, you know, in this area and those traveling up and down Woodward are going to see tree line much more than they're going to see a building facility. As Mr. May's mentioned, all truck traffic will be confined to the very southmost area and, you know, at very, I think, a good point on decibel level, so trucks that are coming in and out of the park are probably going to be doing 5 to 10 miles an hour because obviously a semi-truck has to go very slow to make this turn and head into the park. All truck traffic will be immediately directed back behind the facility and into the park. The building itself will serve as a sound buffer for all truck traffic. I know that there have been concerns about with the removal of the vegetation that was in place here and the grading that's taking place is that we hear much more traffic noise from 355, but when the building is complete, sound studies that we conducted show that there will actually be a reduction of 8 to 10 percent in sound levels from 355 for the residents here. So that was something that we looked at very closely, the final impact in sound. I know that there's also been concern about the dust and debris during the grading here, and we do have water trucks on site, we will work hard to control that perhaps better than in the last couple of days. But I will say also that the grading period is a very finite period that will come and go very quickly, will be if this proposed development is approved, we'd be at what's called pad level very quickly, and then that kind of movement is completed and we'll move on to other phases of construction that are much less disruptive and messy. And I think that really hits on the things that I wanted to talk about. I just want to reiterate, working very closely with staff, we gave special care to the visual impact from the residential, the sound impact, and really providing as much setback berming and buffering with vegetation along Woodward Avenue as possible. Those similar type of considerations were put within the entire, you know, concept plan and would be considered at each stage of the development. Unless any of the board members have any other specific questions, I'd conclude at this point.
Thank you. If there are any questions, I'd like to move on. Okay, we are now going to proceed to that part of the evening where residents and guests will have the opportunity to make comments and to ask questions. And for the purposes of proceeding to do so, we will first entertain questions and comments from residents in the back row, and we will move up towards the front, and then those that are standing. So if there's anyone in the back row that would like to address the board, please proceed and remember two things, take your name and address the purposes of the public record and as much as possible speak right away to the microphone so that everyone can hear what I'm saying. Thank you.